This annual organizational meeting of December 12th, 2022, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Bradley?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Prohaska?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Sancy?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
Great, so we have some visitors that are going to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we need to get them in? Ryan, can you get them? They're in the hall.
Oh, sure.
I can hear them talking out there. They're all excited.
We didn't do the simple call.
You want to introduce yourselves?
My name is Willman, and I'm in fifth grade at Kennedy Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Owen, and I go to, I'm in fifth grade and I go to Kennedy Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Jude, and I'm in fifth grade and I go to Kennedy Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Emily, and I'm in fifth grade at Kennedy Elementary School.
My name is Harper, and I go to Kennedy Elementary, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, my name is Paisley, I'm in fifth grade and I go to Kennedy Elementary School.
My name is Lauren, I'm in fifth grade and I go to Kennedy Elementary.
Hi, my name is Ashley, and I'm in fifth grade, I go to Kennedy Elementary School.
My name is Mark, and I'm in fifth grade at Kennedy Elementary School.
Jack, and I'm here at Kennedy Elementary School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
Thank you.
Yes.
Awesome.
Thank you. You guys can head out.
Now you can go. The job. Good job. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
I move that the Board of Education approved the agenda as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approved the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 14th, 2022, as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 14th, 2022, as submitted. Is there any discussion? I'll just say this, first time in a while we've only had one set of meeting minutes to approve. You know, all those special meetings in the fall? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
So that brings us to one of two public hearings that we're having tonight, and the first
one is on the proposed 2023-2024 school calendar. So if we could start with an overview from Superintendent Hawkins.
Thanks, Ms. Parks. As you know, we had proposed a two-year calendar, that has been a tradition here in the district, a 23-24, and then a 24-25. And when we took feedback from the community members and our staff members, there was some concerns about the 24-25 calendar due to the state requiring us to start on August 23rd. So we've heard from the Department of Education that Chapter 12 has been opened up with the possibility of giving districts a little more flexibility around a calendar. So with that, we are asking tonight for the Board to just approve the 23-24 calendar, and then we would hopefully look at a two-year cycle next year at this time. So really looking at a calendar that is very similar to the calendar that we have currently in our system.
Thank you.
I move the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're right.
All right, okay. Public hearing.
That's the result.
Yeah. On the proposed 2023-2024 school calendar, an authorized payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the proposed 2023-2024 school calendar, an authorized payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. So we now open it up for public comments specifically related to the 2023-2024 calendar.
I move the Board of Education close public hearing and return to regular session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion also carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the 2023-2024 school calendar as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the 2023-2024 school calendar as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. So we have a school calendar for next year. All right. Great. So our second public hearing is related to the Roosevelt Middle School roof replacement, and our manager of building and grounds, Rob Powers, is going to come up to give us an overview of that project. So, welcome, Rob.
Good evening, everybody. The Roosevelt Middle School roof project that is in front of you is to replace all of the flat roof sections of that building. The domed roof over the gym was replaced and fixed in a previous project, that's why that's not included. This replacement will update everything then. We had four bidders that submitted bids for this project. Jim Geezy Commercial Roofing with the apparent low, with the accepted alternate, if you approve it, to extend the warranty from a 25-year warranty to a 30-year warranty, which we believe will benefit the district greatly. Any questions?
Does that 974, does that include the warranty, or that is?
Yes. Yep, that is total with the alternate accepted.
I think that roof is about what, so old as Roosevelt is, whatever that is.
I believe so, yeah.
It's original.
18 years, I think.
18 years, wow. Yep, it's about time.
It's done its duty.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I move the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of the notice of public hearing on Roosevelt Middle School roof replacement project, an authorized payment of legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the Roosevelt Middle School roof replacement project, an authorized payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. So just like the last one, I guess we need to have an motion for that? Not for this one? Okay, so there's an opportunity for public comment specific to the Roosevelt Middle School roof replacement project at this time? All right. Anyone?
I move the Board of Education approve the authorizing resolution as submitted, adopting the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Roosevelt Middle School roof replacement.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the authorizing resolution as submitted, adopting the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Roosevelt Middle School roof replacement. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. So Rob reviewed the bids for us at this point, so is there any other information we need to discuss related to that?
I think he just gave us one bid.
He needs to talk about the other bids. Okay, Rob, you got to come back, Rob. Tell us the other bids.
You get to come back up to the.
Just tell us who all bid.
Who bid?
The mountains, just names.
I'm sorry?
Both.
Both.
Okay. So, the four bidders that we had were Jim Geezy Commercial Roofing with a base bid of $864,995, with the alternate being $109,140. Blackhawk Roof Company was $1,129,100 for base bid, and $214,000 for the alternate. Geisler Brothers Company was $1,188,996,000 for the base bid, and $110,000 for the alternate. Geezy Roofing is $895,990, or sorry, $895,990 for the base bid, and $120,000 for the alternate.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. I will move the Board of Education approve and award the construction bid for Roosevelt Middle School roof replacement project as recommended and further outlined in the authorizing resolution to Jim Geezy Commercial Roofing Incorporated in the total amount of $974,135.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve and award the construction bid for the Roosevelt Middle School roof replacement project as recommended and further outlined in the authorizing resolution to Jim Geezy Commercial Roofing Incorporated in the amount of $974,135. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. So we're back in regular session. Good job, everybody. So that brings us to board salutes, and we have a very exciting, special board salute to start out. I'd like to invite Teacher of the Year Kelly Ricky to come up to the podium.
Hello, my name is Chris Oberhauffer, I'm the principal at Washington Middle School, and I have the great pleasure of working with Ms. Ricky each and every day. Ms. Ricky was a 2022 Teacher of the Year for the Dubuque Community School District. In addition to going above and beyond her assigned duties like so many teachers across the district, Kelly's role epitomizes what the core of public education is all about, and that is a free and appropriate education for all students. Kelly works in our structured autism program at Washington Middle School. In this role, Kelly supports students with some of the most significant disabilities in our schools. She is creative, passionate, and an endless advocate for the best interest of her students. Kelly and the team of staff that work with this population of students have gotten the most out of each and every student that comes into their room. Kelly is here, being recognized tonight because she truly has made life-changing differences for her students. Congratulations to Ms. Kelly Ricky.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I just want to say thank you really to the staff that I work with. As Chris pointed out, really working in significant disabilities, it takes a lot of people involved to work with each of those students. So really, everybody around them who works with them makes all the difference, so thanks.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, I believe there's a couple of board salutes. Mr. Sancy?
Yes, I have one for this amazing young lady by the name of Ms. Leila Saunders, who's a junior at Hempstead High School, and who is a part of this amazing program called the IJAG program. And so she was one of 48 applicants that had the opportunity to attend a National IJAG Student Leadership Academy in Washington, DC. And so not only did she have an opportunity to represent her family, her friends, her teachers, but she had the opportunity to network with her peers when she attended, and had the opportunity to bring some of those great ideas back to the state of Iowa, and I believe had the opportunity to connect with some of our state legislators as well. And I know we'll have the opportunity to hear from her later on, and also her amazing teacher, Ms. Danny. I do got to give her a shout-out as well with the amazing work that she does in the classroom and in the community. I firsthand had the opportunity to attend many of her classes, to come talk to students, but also watch as she brings students to the larger community, to connect them to our local government and how they can play a voice. So can't wait to hear more from Ms. Leila in a little bit, but also a big shout-out to Ms. Danny as well for all the work that you do for our students and our community.
Great, thank you. Any others?
Yeah, I've got one or two here. I'd like to give a board salute that goes out to both senior high school and Hempstead High School and their fans for the outstanding sportsmanship exhibited on last Friday night at the intercity basketball games. Student sections in particular exhibited outstanding sportsmanship, cheered on their classmates, and were very respectful. There was also a very good turnout of parents, the public fans, I'm not sure how many people were there total, probably about, at least maybe 2,000, somewhere near 2,000 people. It was a great night. And also kudos to the district director of athletics and activities, Joe Maloney, and assistant principals for activities and athletics at each of our high schools, Brent Cook and Eric Miller, for their work to support and enhance our offerings with a deep spirit of sportsmanship. Yeah, the night was a very good night, it was really a good turnout, very spirited play. I'd also like to point out a board salute to the Hempstead pep band, and their director, Greg Dow. It's always, to me, it's very great to see an inspiring pep band, it has a lot of pizzazz to it, and they really add a lot to the game.
And they had fun hats on, too.
And they had fun hats on, too. And, yeah, it's kind of the, the kids, kind of the fans, often the school students, they get together and they decide, they usually have a theme for what they're going to dress as for the game, and in particular this game, I don't recall what the students dressed as, but they usually do that. But it was a great night, I was glad I was there, and hope it keeps up.
Thank you, Mr. Prohaska. Ms. Jones?
Yes. Got a board salute to our, the English teacher, Erin Dean, and our theater director at Dubuque Senior High School, who was recently inducted to the Iowa Thesbian Hall of Fame. This honor recognizes Erin's demonstrated dedication to the Thespians of Iowa, promotion of theater, arts, and arts education, and years of service to students in their respective schools. Dubuque senior graduate Brady Booth spoke of the induction ceremony of Erin's dedication to students and the state organization. Erin now joins two former Dubuque Senior Hall of Fame members, Sybil Lamb, who was inducted in 1996, and Fran Hedeman, inducted in 1997. Congratulations to Erin and this outstanding accomplishment.
Great. Awesome.
I have a couple. Saturday night, I was privileged to attend the Madrigal Dinner at Dubuque Senior High School. Oh my goodness, what a spectacular event, and so I just want to acknowledge the senior music department. Stephanie Krameyer King was the coordinator for the event, I believe, and certainly to everybody who planned and executed a complex evening of celebration and wonderful time, thanks to them, especially to students and parents who got involved and made that all happen. Also like to say bravo to seniors color guard. I've learned that they earned, at the recent state Class 3A Color Guard competition, they earned first place, and I believe they have a longstanding history of first places in color guard at the state level. They also were given one of two judges' choice awards for the day's statewide competition. So congratulations and thanks to Anna Stewart, the director, to Stephanie Krameyer and Jill Wissing, assistant directors, and an interesting aside, Anna and Jill are alumni of the color guard, they were students who participated as color guard, in the color guard when Stephanie was the director, so pretty cool.
Great. Anything else? Lots of good things happening in the district.
Yep.
Thank you.
I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. So we now open it up for public comments specifically related to the 2023-2024 calendar.
I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. So we have a school calendar for next year. All right. Great. So our second public hearing is related to the Roosevelt Middle School roof replacement, and our manager of building and grounds, Rob Powers, is going to come up to give us an overview of that project. So, welcome, Rob.
Good evening, everybody. The Roosevelt Middle School roof project that is in front of you is to replace all of the flat roof sections of that building. The domed roof over the gym was replaced and fixed in a previous project, that's why that's not included. This replacement will update everything then. We had four bidders that submitted bids for this project. Jim Geezy Commercial Roofing with the apparent low, with the accepted alternate, if you approve it, to extend the warranty from a 25-year warranty to a 30-year warranty, which we believe will benefit the district greatly. Any questions?
Does that 974, does that include the warranty, or that is?
Yes. Yep, that is total with the alternate accepted.
I think that roof is about what, so old as Roosevelt is, whatever that is.
I believe so, yeah.
It's original.
18 years, I think. 18 years, wow.
It's done its duty.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
I move the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of the notice of public hearing on Roosevelt Middle School roof replacement project, an authorized payment of legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the Roosevelt Middle School roof replacement project, an authorized payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. So Rob reviewed the bids for us at this point, so is there any other information we need to discuss related to that?
I think he just gave us one bid.
He needs to come up and talk about it.
Talk about the other bids. Okay, Rob, you got to come back, Rob. Tell us the other bids.
You get to come back up to the.
Just tell us who all bid.
Who bid?
The mountains, just names.
I'm sorry?
Both.
Both.
Okay. So, the four bidders that we had were Jim Geezy Commercial Roofing with a base bid of $864,995, with the alternate being $109,140. Blackhawk Roof Company was $1,129,100 for base bid, and $214,000 for the alternate. Geisler Brothers Company was $1,188,996,000 for the base bid, and $110,000 for the alternate. Geezy Roofing is $895,990, or sorry, $895,990 for the base bid, and $120,000 for the alternate.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. I will move the Board of Education approve and award the construction bid for Roosevelt Middle School roof replacement project as recommended and further outlined in the authorizing resolution to Jim Geezy Commercial Roofing Incorporated in the total amount of $974,135.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve and award the construction bid for the Roosevelt Middle School roof replacement project as recommended and further outlined in the authorizing resolution to Jim Geezy Commercial Roofing Incorporated in the amount of $974,135. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. So, at this time, we'd like to invite Nick Hess to come and tell us what's going well at Kennedy.
All right, so, again, I'm Nick Hess, I'm the principal at Kennedy. It is, I'm in my fourth year as Kennedy's principal, my seventh year at Kennedy, and my 22nd year in the district, so been around for a little bit now. You know, anytime I think about what's going well at Kennedy, it's the same thing that it was seven years ago when I started there, it really is the people. We have got a very veteran, a very dedicated staff, and you know, even though they have been in the profession for a long time, they are 100% invested in continuous improvement, and they're willing to do what it takes to, you know, meet the evolving needs of our students. The other thing, too, is our families. You know, that really shows up in a high percentage of our daily attendance. I mean, not where we would like it to be, it could always be better, but I mean, we do pretty well each day. 98% of our students had at least one family member, someone with him or her at fall conferences. Our last two fundraisers, 2021, we raised just over $36,000, and in this last fundraiser at the end of October, we were just under $30,000, so it shows, you know, both the financial and just a high investment in our school, in our trust, in our staff. The other thing, too, is we've had a real increased attendance in our monthly PSA meetings. A few years ago, we would be lucky if we had everybody on the board there, now we're consistently 12 and 15. So we're seeing that engagement, that buy-in. Just a couple other things that's going well, the Iowa School Report Card. So in 2019, we were ranked acceptable, and we did have a targeted asset designation for a special education reading girls. When that report card was released this fall, our rank moved to commendable, and we were able to get rid of our asset designation. A big part of that comes back to our connection with the AEA. We were involved in a state pilot program on specially-designed instruction that really impacted how we plan instruction, how we analyze data, that's carried through our instructional coaches, it's carried through our building. A lot of the things we learned, they are still very present today, and I really think that had a lot to do with, you know, moving forward from that, from being designated. Kind of on that same note, we just received a $3,000 grant from the Foundation for Dubuque Public Schools to purchase decodable text that, you know, aligns with the work we're doing with their school report card. Our library, that has been a focus of our fundraising, we're really looking to kind of change our library from, you know, kind of the old-school to, you know, more of a collaborative space that our students can enjoy and want to be in. You know, we've put together a lot of, like, makerspace activities, collaborative things that kids can do in there. With our fundraiser last year, we put about $23,000 in soft seating and just different things in there. This year, the focus is, you know, shelving and some other aesthetic things, trying to open up our libraries, just kind of sits in the center of our school, so we really want to change the way that looks. You know, to go with that, we've had a really big overhaul in our collection. Our tech coach and I, the last few years, learned a lot from people about library really is a science, and, you know, we had a student-to-book ratio of 36 to 1, which seems like a good thing, and we found out that's actually like twice what it should be. So we've done a lot of work, weeding our collection, taking out, you know, things that are outdated, circulate, you know, our joke is if it says Pluto is still a planet, it doesn't business being in our library. So we have put about $12,000 into updating our collection to increase both our publication date and really put a strong focus on our nonfiction. So we've used a lot of building funds, PSA funds, and we're also extremely fortunate that we have a private donor that is a former Kennedy teacher that supports our library frequently. Last year, there was a story on that, and then she made another, there was another donation this year. Her donations always start with the Iowa Children's Choice Award books, we buy enough solar sets, and then we are able to move on from there, and then from now, one of our projects is we're reaching into classroom libraries to have that updated, and teachers are, you know, working with us to get things ordered that match curriculum. Another really big thing that's coming back post-COVID is our mentoring program. We had a really, really strong mentoring program with both Kendall Hunt, McGraw-Hill, you know, unfortunately COVID shut that down for a little bit. We are now, we have 17 active mentors, so, you know, that's a good number from where we were, still working our way back up, but we do have people still interested. You know, again, I spoke to that Kendall Hunt, McGraw-Hill connection. Interestingly, some of our mentors, they will continue to mentor after, you know, if they would choose to go to different employment from Kendall Hunt or McGraw-Hill. The other thing we're really seeing this year is our mentors stepping up and supporting not just the students, but their families on a bigger scale. A few different mentors have adopted families for the holiday season and things like that, they're, I think, seeing the, you know, the bigger need outside of school. The other thing that has really been, just been inspiring the last couple of weeks is the community partners we've had calling and asking to help. You know, Kendall Hunt is sponsoring one of our families for the holidays, the McCoiger who reached out and asked for a family to sponsor, and then on top of that, we've had individuals, some connected to the school and some not, you know, supporting families for the holidays, they dropped off lunch money, you know, clothing, COVID boots, so I think a lot of that's just having the doors back open. It's just really, it's been really great. But I mean, the common theme in everything as far as what's going well, it still comes back to, you know, great people that are willing to do their work and support every student every day, and the one thing at Kennedy with the people is they support each other, too, so it's a pretty great place.
Thanks, Nick. Thank you so much.[1751.41]
Thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else wishing to address the board can do so at this time. We ask that you come to the podium, state your full name, your relation to the district, and make sure to keep your comments to three minutes.
Hello, my name is Leila Saunders, and I'm a junior at Hempstead High School, and I am part of the IJAG program at Hempstead. And I just got back from the trip from Washington DC. I joined IJAG my seventh grade year, and before I joined, I was very shy and quiet and really kept to myself. But now I'm in IJAG, and they really taught me the leadership goals that I needed to be here, and just amazing opportunities as well. I've been to the state Capitol twice, and at Washington DC, I got the chance to meet with Joni Ernst, Chuck Grassley, and Miller Meeks. And just like sitting down and having conversation with them was just a wide, like an eye-opening opportunity that I never imagined I could have. And IJAG, we do like so many great things. I learned how to build a resume, I wrote a cover letter, and just many other things that I wouldn't have ever learned. And, yeah. What else am I supposed to say?
That's it. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you very much.
And I'm Dani Tisher. I'm the IJAG teacher at Hempstead for 11th and 12th grade. And I just wanted to say thanks to our board and our district. IJAG programs are only as strong as their districts let them be. So the things that I can do are because they're approved by my principal, athletic director, Shirley, all of you letting us go on field trips, letting us do fundraising. So, without strong students, without strong leaders, that starts in the 7th grade programs. So, having 7th grade through 12th grade IJAG programs is a huge, a huge step ahead, the IJAG advantage, we call it, for our students. So, just appreciation for all of you supporting us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
We have to reinstate the rules of order.
We do. I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to our regular session.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Now, Mr. Prohaska.
I get ahead of myself sometimes.
A little bit.
I move that the Board of Education approve the items listed in the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any item that a board member wishes to have? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, so that brings us to the Facilities and Support Services Committee report from Ms. Whitman.
Thank you. Our meeting, Facility Support Meeting, was on December 5th, and I'll just highlight a few things. Mike Kircher of Kircher and Associates gave his annual report regarding the district's audit, and the financial statements were presented fairly, and Mike gave an unmodified, clean opinion with no substantial findings. And Mr. Kelleher thanked Rick Till, Lisa Demmer, Sarah Fobb for their hard work in preparing this document. You know, a lot of work goes into it, and thank you for all your participation and good work. We had update on current district projects. There'll be a couple of them that'll pretty much fall off, I think, by the end of the year. Central kitchen mechanical system replacement and Hempstead High School kitchen freezer replacement. Amy Hawkins, superintendent, gave us an update for the middle school consolidation study, and we're looking forward to a recommendation from the Invision Group in the January board meeting. So that's what we're hoping for. And happy to announce synergistics update. Abby reported we have 12 buildings in our district that are energy-certified and are awaiting an EPA Energy Star certification. So good work with our synergistics group and the people in the buildings that are complying with all the new safety and energy-efficient protocol. And that is all I have for updates. And I have some recommendations for our projects. So, I move the Board of Education receive and approve the June 30th, 2022 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and approve the June 30th, 2022 Comprehensive Annual Fiscal Financial Report. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to once again publicly command Kevin and his staff for putting together such a fine report, years and years of awards from the state, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans and specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the transportation fueling system replacement project, and set the date, time, and location of public hearing as February 6, 2023, at 4:30 PM at the Dubuque Community School District, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorization, the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the transportation fueling system replacement project, and set the date, time, and location of public hearing as February 6, 2023, at 4:30 PM at the Dubuque Community School District, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans and specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Sageville Elementary School Solar Panel Project, and set the date, time, and location of public hearing as February 6, 2023, at 4:30 PM at the Dubuque Community School District, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for hearing thereon and further authorization, authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Sageville Elementary School Solar Panel Project, and set the date, time, and location of public hearing as February 6, 2023, at 4:30 PM at the Dubuque Community School District, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
And my final recommendation, I move the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans and specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Lincoln School Playground Project, and set the date, time, and location of public hearing as February 6, 2023, at 4:30 PM at the Dubuque Community School District, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Lincoln School Playground Project, and set the date, time, and location of public hearing as February 6, 2023, at 4:30 PM at the Dubuque Community School District, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to say it's encouraging to hear that our city is partnering with this project. And Mr. Sanchi, if you have anything to do with this, this is wonderful. Thank you very much.
We aim to please at the city.
Anyway, yeah, it's good to see the city and the school district get together and do some things together.
Yeah, the architect spoke about the different equipment and projects that are going in this area, and it's gonna be phenomenal. Lincoln's gonna be proud.
It's gonna be great. Megan's here tonight.
Yeah, Megan's here, yep.
Yep.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Whitman, for that report. And that brings us to Ed Programs Policy Committee report from Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Dr. Perk. The committee met on December 6th at 4:30, and is our, as is our custom, there are three basic sections of the meeting. The first one in this case was to hear from our former superintendent, Stan Reingans, who now is the chief administrator for Keystone Area Education Agency. And I appreciate that Stan is getting around to the school districts in the northeast, northeast part of the state, because that's the area that served, 41 districts, I believe, that are served by Keystone AEA in a supportive way to education of the students and education of the staff members. So it was very interesting to have our own data brought to us. Keystone employs 53 AEA staff members who serve the northeastern part of the state, which is the geographic region of Keystone AEA. It's an agency among the other, I believe, seven other agencies, AEA's in the state that serve a geographic portion of the state in support of the public and parochial systems that reside within that geographic boundary. So Mr. Reingans, pardon me, brought with him four of his key agency leaders who sort of brought us up to date on what are the, what are the services that Keystone provides for us as a district uniquely. And just to break them down quickly for you, in terms of educational services, that includes work, supportive work with English language learner students, networking for principals and superintendents, professional learning for other staff members. And we have many, many ways in which our, you heard Mr. Hess speak of the ESSA designation. Keystone helps us to understand the state and federal guideline and processes for continuing to improve our student achievement. And that comes with the ESSA designation that each of the schools in the state, public schools in the state, receive in terms of their student achievement performance. So Keystone works hand over hand with us in that regard to work with our school teams to, to, again, as Mr. Hess said, to work with the data that we have diagnostically available to us, and on which we build our improvement plans for how we keep getting better and better at each school. Keystone also provides special education services for students who have individualized educational plans. I didn't realize the number is what it is. The Dubuque Community School District has 1,644 instructional IEPs. That means students who are receiving specialized instructional services in one way or another. In addition, there are 224 support-only IEPs. So that is nearly 1,900 students in our district who receive supportive services from Keystone AEA. So when you hear of a child receiving vision services, hearing services, physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech and language services, diagnostic services for consideration of extended programming, that's with the help of our partners at Keystone AEA. And we're very grateful for that. Anyone can refer a child, parents, grandparents, neighbors, teachers, doctors, anybody who has a concern that a child might need more services, that referral can be made to Keystone AEA, and help will be on the way. So, these are critical and valued services that we benefit as a district, as do the others, the other districts and schools in our AEA. And I have the privilege to serve on that board, and I just want to say publicly how grateful we as a district are for the kind of collaboration and support services. These are critical services, they're, we couldn't do without them really, and do well by our students. And it comes to us in a spirit of partnership with the AEA, and we're very grateful for that. So, that was the first part of our agenda. At the second part, we appreciate that Superintendent Hawkins is bringing us updates in the areas of our strategic plan. This was the, in the area of computer science, which is priority initiative number seven. So we heard from Julie Lang, who's the Director of Digital Literacy, and Kobe Culbertson, Director of Technology for the district, and they updated the board committee on district priorities number seven, 14, and 16, all which fall under that umbrella of computer science. So just very quickly, I'll highlight a little bit about that. Julie told us that coding has been added to the elementary level throughout the district, which is pretty exciting. Middle school students work with Spheros in robotics. High school robotics teams go to the middle schools to help eighth graders know what opportunities lie ahead for them in high school with robotics. And our robotic teams have expanded in all three middle schools, which is really exciting. High school students also have had an increased exposure in computer science classes. And so, much is happening, and Kobe, or Julie maybe, shared with us that pathways are being created. Those are courses that are lined up in a pathway to get to some acquired set of skills. And their pathways are being added in 2023-24 school year for computer science and information technology. That's pretty wonderful to look ahead and see what our students are gonna be able to have available to them with that. Priority initiative 14 of computer science is exploring learning management systems. Those are the, the technology system by which our teachers and other staff member manage the diagnostic information that, of our student achievement in the various areas and standards of learning. And what's being considered there is adding our current Canvas system, which is the name of the learning management system for middle and high schools, is being considered to be added at the elementary level as well, which would bring us, if that selected, a dimensional opportunity to monitor student achievement and progress in the areas and standards. They'll keep us posted on that. Priority initiative number 16 is about enhancing district cybersecurity. We hear lots in the news about the tragedy of school districts, among other organizations and institutions, being hacked. And so Kobe Culbertson, who is vigilant about it, shared with us some of the things that are going on, which was fascinating to me, to see the amount of staff training that's going on to protect district data, along with, here, here's some phrases Kobe shared with us, I'm not sure what they all mean. "The district has adopted a more aggressive stance on various attack vectors, including the following: quarantine first, remediate later." Some of our district colleagues wish they had done that, I'm sure, when they found they had been hacked. "Least privileged philosophy, multi-factor authentication, password security and password manager, exploring best practices and services, and conducting rolling phishing tests, P-H-I-S-H-I-M-G, and provide monthly cybersecurity awareness training to all staff." That's a lot of work, all aimed at cybersecurity for our district and its data. And we're grateful to Kobe and his team for all of that. Then we dealt with the physical education exemption application, which I'll be bringing a motion forward at the end of my report. That's where we offer physical education courses that meet five days per week for a whole semester. And that, actually, by doing that instead of fewer days per week over two semesters, we learned from Superintendent Hawkins, that actually increases 25% each student's amount of time being spent in a fitness class because of that arrangement. But that takes a yearly action by the board to approve that, that way of conducting those classes. You've already heard from the superintendent about the school calendar, we talked about that, and we're pleased to, to hear that we may have some greater flexibility going forward on the start date for the school year. So we've already taken action on that. And we concluded our meeting by reviewing and updating five policies, all of which were approved on the consent agenda we've already acted on. So, a motion before us as a result of the meeting, I move that the Board of Education approve the annual physical education exemption request.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the annual physical education exemption request. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I would just add that, that then, now that this has been passed, Superintendent Hawkins will submit this request to the Department of Education on our behalf to approve that format.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bradley, for that report. This brings us to new business.
I move that the Board of Education establish a regular meeting of the Board of Education for the second Monday of each month at 5:30 PM at the Forum, and strategic plan meetings the fourth Monday in October, February, May, and May at 5:30 PM at the Forum.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education establish the regular meeting of the Board of Education for the second Monday of each month at 5:30 PM at the Forum, and strategic plan meetings the fourth Monday in October, February, and April, or sorry, May, let's do it in May, where, like it says, at 5:30 PM at the Forum. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education name The Telegraph Herald as the official publication of record.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education name The Telegraph Herald as the official publication of record. Any discussion?
Elizabeth's happy to hear this right now.
We'll have to pass it first, Elizabeth. We'll have to pass it first, Elizabeth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Stick with us, Elizabeth, thanks.
I move the Board of Education name Firsty Carew Jurgens and Sedmeyer P.C. as the official legal counsel of record.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education name Firsty Carew Jurgens and Sedmeyer P.C. as the official legal counsel of record. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education name the following financial institutions as depositories for district funds in the amount of $50 million each. Collins Community Credit Union, Dubuque Bank and Trust, DuPaco Community Credit Union, Dutrack Community Credit Union, Fidelity Bank, ISJIT, Midwest One Bank, Premier Bank, UMB Bank, and US Bank.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education name the following financial institutions as depositories for district funds in the amount of $50 million each. Collins Community Credit Union, Dubuque Bank and Trust, DuPaco Community Credit Union, Dutrack Community Credit Union, Fidelity Bank, ISJIT, Midwest One Bank, Premier Bank, UMB Bank, and US Bank. Is there any discussion?
What's ISJIT?
Yeah, what is that?
I was wondering that.
Iowa School Joint Investment Trust Organization. It's run by ISB.
Okay, and USB?
UMB.
That's the bank we use for our sales tax bonds. They're kind of the bond, they keep track of who the bondholders are. Trustee.
Rest are local, I know them.
Why don't they go by their real name?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 816593 at this time.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education make, take no further disciplinary action related to student number 816593 at this time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, so that brings us to the nomination and election of Board President. So members may nominate a member for office of the president, and the person should know beforehand if he or she wishes to nominate, wishes to be nominated as eligible and willing to serve. The person can nominate him or herself. The nomination does not need a second. A member can be nominated for more than one office. The presiding officer can continue presiding even if he or she is one of the nominees for the office, and a member can rise and decline the nomination during the nominating process. So at this time, I'll take any nominations for president.
I would like to place into nomination the name of Dr. Kate Parks for Board President with sincere gratitude for an excellent year of leadership this past year as president of the board.
I would like to nominate Lisa Whitman.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two nominations. Myself and Lisa Whitman have been nominated for the office of president. Is there any discussion?
You know, one of the things that, you know, we've talked about kind of privately is kind of what will be kind of the process to, I guess, nominate people for different leadership roles. And I know we'll continue to have this conversation. I do agree that we've had two great leaders. And what I've seen in the community as an example that we could leverage and utilize is just kind of the rotating, right? So that way, everyone has an opportunity to lead, take advantage of that. And as Lisa has been serving as Vice President, I think it would be nice to just get you at President, so that way you can serve if you choose to. If not, we can allow the current president or someone else. And that way, someone else can step in as Vice President and continue to, to learn the roles. So that was just kind of my thought process on that.
I'm sure that, in my mind, either one would be commendable and fulfill the office of president very well.
I agree, you guys have done a great job this last year leading us and kind of bringing us all together as a group, so.
Thank you.
I would speak in favor of continuing our current roles with, I understand we have not had a nomination for Vice President, fittingly, yet. But I think they, in the spirit of what others have said, I think you, you've served as a great team. And it's been a team of people that has worked collaboratively and provided us great leadership. So again, I would speak in favor of continuing with Kate as president, hoping that we would see Lisa continue as Vice President. I understand what you're looking at, Anderson, just to acknowledge that.
Yeah, we all have thoughts.
All right, so let's go ahead and move to the voting. So all those who wish to cast a vote for Kate Parks, please signify by raising your hand. All those who wish to cast a vote for Lisa Whitman, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, thank you. The motion.
I move that the Board of Education elect Dr. Kate Parks as president. Is that redundant? Did we just do that?
That's right.
No, we don't need a second.
But we do need to vote, right?
We're all called.
It's always a little fumbly with this.
Okay.
So it's been moved that the Board of Education elect Kate Parks as president. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
That motion carries. Do I stay here?
Yes. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of president in the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson Counties, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law? I do. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you, it's my pleasure to keep serving,
so at this time, we can, I will accept any nominations for the office of Vice President.
I would like to nominate Lisa Whitman as Vice President of the Board of Education.
Thank you.
I would like to nominate Jen.
Thank you.
I nominate Anderson Sancy.
All right. Do we have discussion? Um, yes, I think so. I guess, you know, everyone, if you wanted to be nominated or not, you should accept the nomination, right? Or is that part of it? Accept or decline? And then, yeah, we should have discussion.
I do accept the nomination.
Yep, accepted.
I will decline my nomination.
All right, so discussion?
Well, I nominated Anderson. I've nominated him before, two other times, and it has been ignored by this board of, of accepting a nomination of Anderson previously based on experience. And we've not, we've, have since changed that criteria when we had Kate Parks step in as president after two years on the board only. And Anderson's been on the board for four-plus years. And so I think that he has earned the right for Vice President and would lead the district well, representing the voice of the district as we go into some pretty, you know, interesting times. Lisa has done a great job. But again, I also, I, I'm in support of Anderson for that role.
I'll speak in favor of both as nominees. Certainly, both Anderson and Lisa would do a great job. I think that the power of continuing with the teamwork that Kate and Lisa have created is a good thing for us. And I would speak in favor of support for Lisa from that point of view, having done a great job.
Any other discussion?
I just also feel like you would both do a great job. I'm myself in a hard position to cast a vote, because I think you're both very capable in moving forward. I don't know.
Well, I certainly appreciate that more than one person is interested. I think that's not always a dynamic that can happen on school boards where, in other places, it's difficult to find folks that are willing to, to step up and take on these roles. I have appreciated working with Lisa and feel like we have some momentum going in our, in our team approach with our new superintendent. While, you know, very much appreciating that Mr. Sancy would have, you know, much experience to bring as well. So at my, at this point, I think, you know, a year into this leadership, it's been, it's hard to think about, you know, shifting gears. So I would hope to see a continuation of Ms. Whitman, but we'll see how the votes fall.
I'll just comment about you two, that I think you share the responsibilities well within the board. And I'd like to commend both of you for doing that. Anderson, I appreciate your service to the board. You're a tremendous asset to this board, tremendous.
Okay, so are we at a point where we're done discussing? Looks like we are. So all those who wish to vote, to cast a vote for Mr. Anderson Sancy, please signify by raising your hand. All those who wish to cast a vote for Ms. Lisa Whitman, please signify by raising your hand. So it looks like Ms. Whitman has gotten the most votes. So if you would please stand.
Do you vote?
Right hand? That's your right.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of Vice President in Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson Counties, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law? I do. Thanks.
Congratulations.
And I'm very excited to serve another year as Vice President. I've worked, enjoyed working well with Kate Parks, and we will continue to work together, and we share a lot of responsibilities. And appreciate every, appreciate everyone on the board. Thank you.
Thank you all. So that moves us to the appointment of Board Secretary.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Carrie Moss as Board Secretary.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Carrie Moss as Board Secretary. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Carrie, an oath for you too.
Yes. Do you accept that nomination? We hope so.
Carrie, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Secretary in the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson Counties, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law? I do.
Thank you. I think we all are very glad that you said that.
Couldn't do it without you, Carrie.
Couldn't do it, yeah, we appreciate you a lot. And now we need to appoint our Board Treasurer.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Kevin Kelleher as Treasurer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education appoint Kevin Kelleher as Treasurer. Is there any discussion?
You accept?
Kevin, do you? We thought you could swap, swap roles. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Kevin, we have an oath for you as well.
Kevin, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Treasurer in the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson Counties, as now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
Thank you, Kevin.
We're counting on you to do that. And thank you for all of your work doing it so far.
It's a great team, so.
In Kevin, we trust.
In Kevin, we trust, for sure. All right, are there any other board member or administrative issues that are not on the agenda to discuss? All right, seeing none, everyone have a happy holiday, and we are adjourned. Thank you.